...agree to conduct the debate in the forum with the proper respect. We'll have opening remarks of two minutes to introduce yourselves and tell why you're running for town council. We'll move to questions. We'll allow each person about a minute and a half to answer questions. We'll allow one minute for the other candidate to speak up, and then we'll see how it goes, go back and forth. There's only two of you, so it should be, you know, relatively easy to maintain. We'll move on to the next question. We'll rotate the sequence so that each candidate gets to answer a question first. We'll take questions from the press. We've got some questions that were emailed in from the public, although not a lot. We will also take public questions from the folks in the back. And we'll just keep going back and forth until we've run out of time, and you guys get to speak as much as you can. I would like to make just one note to the public. We'll ask that you are limited to asking questions. We appreciate no speeches, public comments. This is not a forum for a regular town council meeting. Appreciate if the candidates did not engage in debates with the public. It won't get to the point that we need to get to. This is an opportunity for the candidates to get their message and their views out to the public, and we'd appreciate that. So, gentlemen, thanks so much for stepping up. Thanks for stepping forward, putting your names up to serve us all. We appreciate it. And this morning, joining us from the local press, from the union leader, is April Gilmet, and from LondonderryNH.net is Meredith Faddal. So, thank you both for joining us this morning. And with that, I think we can move on. Shaun, you're up. Why are you running for town council, sir?
Um, there's always been a certain degree of insanity in my family.
As you pointed out, because anybody who does this is that way.
I'm just kidding. I grew up in this town. I realize that we're going to continue to see the growth that we are. We are at a crossroads to, you know, see these control, you know, see these in control, the growth that we're going to be getting in front of us. You know, I've tried to demonstrate some leadership through the years. This past year, I was town council chairman, realized my limitations, wasn't such a good chairman. Tried my best, but came a little short. But on the council side of it, I've always felt I've been fair and tried to listen to both sides of arguments, and to consider, you know, everybody's opinions into things so that you make a pretty good decision on that. One thing I think that is important is we need to keep things affordable for everyone in town. I know that this past year in the council, we've seen some expenses that we've kind of curtailed for the last two years before. In this budget cycle, we presented to the vote, we're presenting to the voters, an increase in our taxes, and that is to kind of bring us up to speed with some of the costs that we've been pushing back. And so, that's one thing that we're looking at and trying to get the voters to support on Election Day. I guess I'm running again because I still feel I have some work to do to, you know, try to continue for another three years if possible, if the, you know, if the voters choose that. If not, I'm sure, you know, Jim will make a good councilman, too. But again, I felt like I still have some things to do and would like to be, you know, selected to do that again, if elected. So, that's pretty much all I have.
Thanks, Shaun. Jim?
Hello. My name is Jim Butler. I've been a resident in Londonderry for over 26 years. I'd like to start the meeting by disclosing the word transparency. I have a son that is employed by the Londonderry Fire Department. His name is Beau. He's worked for the Londonderry Fire Department for seven years. I've always brought my kids up to do what's right for them, and they've got to do it on their own. If there's any questions about that or any concerns about conflict of interest, I'd be more than happy at one point to discuss it, but I believe on, you know, getting something like that out on the table. Londonderry is at a very critical point in our, in our growth. And the only way, in my opinion, that we're going to be able to increase our tax revenue is through business. It's not going to be through, through housing. It's not, it's through business, it's through developing. Woodmont is one, and I know that's a hot topic, and I'm sure we'll discuss it later. Pettingill Project's another one. We do have the space in town, and we have to become more proactive at trying to bring business in to increase our tax revenue. I think we need to evaluate the building, building application in the process and see how, see how we can help that department put that message out. I'm concerned about the senior citizens. I've heard it. They've had, we've had meetings about the senior citizens. I do think we need some affordable housing for senior citizens, senior citizens that have been in this town for quite some time. I think we need to look at that. With everything that's coming up, I've had 30 years' experience in the construction materials industry. The market isn't good right now. They say that the market is starting to pick up. Well, I can tell you that there are people out there saying that the market's picking up, but when it comes to construction and trying to bring revenue into this town, it can take a year, it can take two years before you actually see fruits of that labor. So, I've called on architects, I've called on developers, I call on contractors. So, I feel as though I'm very, I have some unique experience in, in dealing with some of the big issues that we're going to be facing. Londonderry's charact- character could change. I don't want it to change. I came here 26 years because I loved the school system, I loved the way the town presented itself. And as much as we don't like it, there is, and let's face it, Woodmont's a big issue. That's the, that's the quickest way, in my opinion, that we're going to be able to grow revenue. The question is how we're going to handle it, and what we're going to allow the developer do, and what we're not going to allow the developer to do.
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you both. And with that, why don't we move to questions? April?
The question of whether or not to use cable franchise fees to cover expenses in other town departments, it's been a controversial one lately. What are your thoughts on it?
Looking at me first?
Yes.
Okay. That's kind of a simple one for me. The cable studio has a small group of people that feel that the money that comes in through taxes, which is what it is, a tax, should be put into a fund for the cable's usage only. That's not the case. The case is, and this is the legally semantics of it, that's immaterial as far as I'm concerned. It's a tax, it's paid by the people that have cable. Your choice as to whether or not you want to pay that tax is if you have cable. If you want to not pay the tax, then you can have satellite. So, my point is, when it comes down to that, it is a tax that should be put into the general fund. The cable studio itself should be run by the town. The town manager is who that should be reporting to, because it is a function of the town, it is a function of the town manager and his staff. And I think that the council has made some decisions on that that I think are going to improve things in that light in the next, within the next year or two. So, that's pretty much how I feel is it's, it's a tax, it should go into the general fund, and the cable studio should be run out of it.
Thank you, Shaun. Jim?
Sure, sweet. I agree. It is a tax. I know that it's a very emotional issue. I watch the cable if I can't come to a meeting. I mean, it's, it's, it's a very, very good informational tool for this town. And I know, and I've watched, and there's, there's passion in that debate. However, from a fiscal standpoint, I do believe that that should be moved into the operating budget, especially in these economic times where we need to try to find different sources of, of income.
Thanks, Jim. Well, I guess we don't need time to rebut, since you both agree. How about this poll? Take one question from out there? Anybody? Mike?
Well, you knew that was coming. Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Get used to that.
And could you just state your name for the record?
Sure.
Thanks. Oh, he's getting comfortable.
No, I just, I'm holding papers. Mike Brown, Five Carousel.
All right, come on, let's go, Mike.
Mike Brown, Five Carousel Court. First of all, thank you both for having the willingness to step up and volunteer. We really appreciate it. Question related to the town budget and your, your view on, on these things. The three largest cost items in the town budget, police, fire, and highway, which are regarded as essential services, equal 16 million, 338, 350 out of the total budget of 26 million, 741, 721. And that equates to a 63% of, of a taxpayer's tax bill on the town side, approximately $1,000 for a $350,000 homeowner. Looking for your, your views on whether that is an appropriate level going forward, and how you will plan to manage that from a budgetary standpoint?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, George.
Jim, you're up first.
In any town budget, those usually are the three biggest cost line items that you're going to find. I think that our departments are run very professional. I think that our fire department is understaffed, and, and I think that we need to, we need to address that. There's two sides to that story. Number one, I want to make sure that we maintain our essential services, and usually what happens is you can go three or four weeks, and all of a sudden, we have a disaster, and then it comes back to us, and people are going to say, "Well, how, how come we're I know we're not going to bring it up to national averages. My concern is, I live on the south side of town. The south side fire station is staffed with, with, with two firefighters. I think we learned a lesson in the tragic Hemlock Fire. Two firefighters for their personal safety is not very good. They go to a fire, there's two on an engine, they deadman the pump, and if you, I'm sure you understand what I'm saying. And then, you know, these firefighters make a decision, dead manning a pump, on whether or not they're going to enter a building to try to save a life. Now, if that pump goes down before help comes, we've put those firefighters in, in, in a position. I believe our firefighters will make the right decision, but I also believe that we need to at least staff it minimally. And, and we've put this off, and I saw the vote for the town council, and they unanimously agreed with it. It was a close vote with the Budget Committee. They didn't. However, I do agree that we have to look at it.
Thanks, Jim. Shaun?
I think when it comes to the services, for the most part, in my three years of doing council, and then the previous three years on the Budget Committee, I think the folks, they do care the most about, obviously, the safety aspect. We have certain RSAs that we have to run the town by that are required by the state, and we have those essential services that we need to pay for. Beyond that, we call it nice to have, while they are important and offer a lot of good things, we have a bottom-line budget that folks want us to adhere to, and we need to basically fund things out of it. I think going forward, as far as the expenses, well, to Jim's point, you really do need to look at the, the economic engine of the town, and try to make things better, to try to attract more businesses, to help defer some of the taxes. But that's a, you know, in this economy, that's a pie in the sky, and, you know, eventually, hopefully, we can get there. But managing it day-to-day right now, I think that the people have spoken very clearly as far as what they want, and that's safety roads and to run the town. So, I think we've done that. We fell, we have fallen short for many years now, the, to Jim's point, he's absolutely 100% correct. The fire department has been pretty much level as far as staffing goes since 2000. They do need to be, you know, we consider, the decision basically we made was to put it in front of the voters, and by doing that, it's allowing everybody to have the input on whether or not they want to pay for more people. So, it is up to the voters. However, as a councillor and as a citizen, and living on the south part of town, I, I do recognize the fact that we are short-staffed in that area, and hopefully, the voters will support that and bring us up to, up to speed as far as the manning of the station. But other than that, I think that the town has done a good job at managing its staff. Maybe there are some things we could do with economic development differently, because ideas always should be forthcoming, whether it's from a council or whether it's from citizens, to be able to try to impact some changes for the, for the better. So, but that's pretty much, I hope that answers your question, Mike.
Shaun. Jim, do you have anything to follow up?
No. I'll sit.
Melanie?
Meredith.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. The town council has had a stated goal of focusing on economic development for the past several years. What are your ideas for growing the commercial tax base in Londonderry?
Okay, I guess I'm next?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to assault the name?
Yep.
Okay, great. As far as growing it, honestly, Meredith, there isn't a lot the council can do other than take the leadership role and get behind things that come forward. And obviously, all, all five of us in the last council, in previous councils, were all for economic development. I mean, we realize that that's the opportunity. We, we have the land, and eventually, the landowners are going to be able to grow that land and build things. So, when you get down to the bottom line, I support it 100%. As far as ideas, you know, again, that's up to the professionals that we have in, in town. The real estate agents, the, the landowners, they're going to work together, and the council really doesn't play a part in that. The only time a council plays a part in it is if they come to town looking for us to help them with something, you know, you know, maybe it's something that goes beyond the planning board, and they need a council input. But pretty much, we have an excellent planning department, we have an excellent planning board, it's, it's all citizens, and those people do an excellent job at trying to manage the things that come before them. And in all honesty, I think we have enough zoning laws, rules, and regulations in place to keep us protected as a town. So, I'm all for it. I hope it does get better, but as far as myself, as a councillor and having sat through it for three years, I, I think that really, there's only so much control that you have as a councillor. So, I hope that answers your question. Thanks.
Thanks, Shaun. Jim?
As far as a councillor, I know that this recent PUD for Woodmont is in the hands of the planning board, but the town council, really, even though we may not have a lot of control on that, and the planning board has, I still feel as a councillor that representing the people that voted for me, I will have a say in it. I will have, I will be very vocal about, about it. Like I said, the economy is, is struggling. I see it in my business. If anyone understands the development, you could start a permitting process today, and it could take two and a half, three years to design a building and bring it forth. I think we've got to look at streamlining that if we can. One of the things that I did notice, as I sat on the Heritage Commission, are we truly giving the proper information to these developers when they come to us? And, and I'll give you an example. Heritage Board is the first board I've been on. We have the development at exit five, Londonderry Shops. I expected the developer to come in with a design that was fitting for this town. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the town wants to try to stay traditional, try to stay that old, old-town look, try to stay colonial. Well, here's this gentleman, this developer, that has already spent money with an architect to do renderings, and renderings are just renderings. And lo and behold, I get there, and quite frankly, I'll be honest with you, it's a strip mall. And, and my end of the business, it has to be the most economical way to build a building, and it had absolutely no design criteria whatsoever to it. And I said to myself, gee, I'm in this board, what, this developer's spending money to come here, what information did he get? Did he know what our design is? Obviously not, because I was totally against it, and I'm, I'm against the design of that building now. You know, it's just a upgrade of just a strip mall. And in my opinion, and I'll tell it to anybody, it's the cheapest that you can get.
Thanks, Jim. Shaun, did you want to?
Well, I, just to pick up on one thing, I think, you know, while I understand Jim's enthusiasm, and I think that what he has to understand as a councillor, and I had to learn it the hard way, too, there's only so much you can do, because as a councillor, there is no power in one, it's power of five, and that's the biggest thing of the council. And while you can, you know, while you can stay active and share ideas, basically, you really do have to function as a board. And I, I learned that early on, that you really can't just, there's no mavericks, basically, with the council. It's, it's a board that acts together and, you know, should act as such. But, you know, you're right, as far as staying involved, it's important to be able to listen to people. And, you know, the one thing that I, I recognize, having heard some of the concerns over the Woodmont, is people right now that are upset about it, there was a whole, going back years for the PUD and the planning and things, that was all, you know, in regards to big developments. And not, you know, not a lot of people came out to speak against that. And, you know, that was designed to protect, I think, the town, and that's at least the feedback we get from the town staff, based back, you know, back when we passed that. Because I know I've heard some rumblings from people about that. Why did you, why did you allow that? When we, when we passed it, it was because we were told it was the right thing to do, and it would protect us from, you know, bad development. So, I, I think that when it comes down to that, I think sometimes it's a, maybe the cart, you know, the, the horse is out of the barn kind of thing, and now we're trying to figure out how to corral it. So, I don't know. That's kind of my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Shaun. As long as you guys have already broached the subject, let me ask a question about Woodmont. Obviously, that property's been sold, it's now planning on using the new PUD ordinance. So, what are your views on, on that particular process, and, and what would you do to help protect Londonderry if it indeed needs protection? So, and I think we have, Jim?
Is it my turn?
It's your turn. I'm trying really hard to keep track.
Me, too.
I'm getting to double digits now, that's nice.
I think the Woodmont Common Development is, could separate this town and could do damage to this town. I can tell you that I've been to most of the charrettes, I've been to planning board meetings, and if I haven't, I've watched them on our cable TV. I have been at Saturday mornings, I haven't missed many of them, where John Michaels would show up, Kettin Ball would show up, and we are going to have to watch that very carefully, and it can damage our town. I have walked Kit Lane and Gary, I've walked all that to take a look at their proposing one-acre sites that abut that. I think maybe it should be more. I'm concerned about the residents in that area. Through, through roads, I mean, you, you'll see renderings of through roads. Renderings are just renderings. It's not, it's not gospel. But I've seen renderings where they show through roads into those neighborhoods. I can tell you right now, I'm adamantly against that. We need to protect ourselves. We need to protect ourselves on what we allow to build there. We have to look at density, and we have to look at traffic. The traffic study, I think, will play into the density issue. But, for instance, one of the definitions is a nursing home. And under that definition, if you drill down, you'll see that we can have boarding houses, we can have alcohol treatment centers, we can have a gamut of things. Well, quite frankly, I don't want alcohol treatment centers. If we're going to have density, I want to protect the children of this town, and I think that there are things that are in there that we have to pull out. And I'm not afraid to, to stand up to Mike, and, you know, some people have accused me in the past of siding with them. I'm in no one's back pocket. I'm doing this not for me, because I'll probably push in Dan, uh, pansies up on Pillsbury Cemetery. I'm doing it for the future of Londonderry, and we have to make this right. And once we make that commitment, we can't be fighting with the developer, because it, it emanates out into the business industry, and it's a fight, it's a fight, it's a fight. We've got to come to a common goal, we have to come to an agreement, and stick with the plan, and make it positive, not negative. Not everyone's going to agree with me, and that's fine. But I am going to look out for the residents and the future of Londonderry. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Shaun?
No, Jim's right. You know, the master plan has been, I believe it's been presented to the third-party reviewer. They're going to look at it, and the process has started that way. But it hasn't come before the planning board yet. But there is still a lot of input that people can have on it. But again, it's got to be with the planning board. My, my concern is, as a council, there are only, there are only so many things that we can do to work with the planning board. We really can't interfere with what they do. It's kind of a statute that we're not allowed to. We do have a, a council rep that is a ex officio there. But, you know, residents, we do need to protect the town of Londonderry, we do need to protect our, our heritage, our look and our feel, because we still are a small town, even though we're not. And that could be a debate, some people would say either way. But there are a lot of things that Woodmont could do to change this town, and I think that your biggest, your biggest input as a citizen is to be able to still come to the planning board, plead your case as to why or why not you support something. And the council, whether I get elected or not, the council is always an avenue to sit where you're sitting. To come before the council, if you feel that, you know, the planning board isn't listening to you, there is an avenue there that you can choose to do. But I'm sure that the, you know, the planning board has everything in front of them, they realize what's at stake here with this development, and I don't think they're going to let the, the developer push us around.
Thanks, Shaun. Jim, did you have anything else?
No, I'm all set with that.
Okay, thanks. Along, along that same line, I'm just going to ask a email question that came in through email. As I think Jim eloquently pointed out, Woodmont could take years to build out.
Sure.
And if elected, what, as a town councillor, would you do to ensure that the taxpayers are protected from hidden service costs, specifically fire, police, snow plowing, public works? And I believe it is Shaun.
Okay. Go ahead, you can go first.
You sure? Okay.
You guys are messing me up now.
Oh, good.
Well, I think that's something that has to be clearly stated upfront before we start. I'm not going to finance the developer's project. I'm not going to do it. And I think that if we clearly, if the developer clearly understands that he's going to have to either put money aside, or that he's going to have to pay for services that, that, that we're going to have to additionally provide to him, that's what we're going to have to do. But it's important that we put all that upfront, all that upfront. It'll save arguments and fights during and after. With regards to the development itself, I'm concerned about construction time, because we have residents that abut the property. I, I have concerns about which, what areas he wants to start first. I'd like to start, have him start on if he has hotels, or he has office parks, because that's revenue for us. That'll be our quickest revenue, next to Pettingill, because his intent is, and he's told me that he wants to start as soon as possible. So, construction time, construction routes, we want to make sure that, that as this progresses, that we try to make sure that, that our neighborhoods aren't trampled on with trucks and construction vehicles and things like that. I can tell you that I was up last weekend, I think it was, to walk that area again, and I noticed that there was logging, and I noticed someone had put a, a note in one of the emails or whatever, webpages about the logging. I went up there, the permit sign is 10 feet high, you need a ladder to get up there. And as a Heritage Committee member, I walked the property, and the person that's doing the logging has decimated stone walls. I've already sent information to Art Rock, I said, "Art," I said, "This is not a good start." I said, "Have someone go up there, bring the permit down so people can see it, and we need to talk to them." I was cleaning that land to protect those stone walls, because that's state statute. Those stone walls are protected. They're just going in there and wiping them out. So, I mean, I've already been involved in, and I am watching it, so, and I do care about the abutters. Whether or not they're going to agree me, agree with me on everything, Anne, I, I don't know.
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
Shaun?
Yeah, Jim hit the nose, hit the nail right on the head. There's a lot of things to, to watch and to keep track of when it comes to this. You have to, of a project this size, there are a lot of concerns that, you know, one of my worries as a councillor, and this is just a private worry, I haven't really talked about it, because we really haven't talked about the Woodmont development and such, is do we have enough staff to basically monitor and keep an eye on things? So, that's one concern I have right now, is do, are we adequately staffed to make sure that this development is, you know, do we have enough people to watch it and make sure things are getting done right? So, that's one thing we'll have to work with within, you know, the town manager, and make sure that we are prepared to be able to address that. You know, but Jim's right, there are a lot of concerns, but I think it's, to this point, it's still a little bit premature as far as when, when does he start? I mean, he has to present something first that we can see. I mean, we've had the design charrettes, but when it comes down to it, like, you know, Jim was saying, it's, you know, it's a design charrette, you know, to Jim's point was, you were talking about, all right, I'm stumbling. There was a word I was looking for, but I can't find it. But anyway, long and the short of it is, there's a lot to keep track of and to make sure that we're protecting the town. And until his design comes before the public and they get a look at it, we really... And until his design comes before the public and they get a look at it, we really can't form an opinion as of yet. But he's absolutely correct in the fact that we do have to protect ourselves, and we do have to monitor it, make sure that he's doing it the way we want it to be done. And like I said, I think we have a lot of zoning things in place to protect us, but by the same stretch, you can take nothing for granted when it comes to a large development or developer.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate that. Why don't we move back to the press, April?
Okay. With the tenants at the recent deliberative session rather low compared to the number of registered voters in town, what's the best way to get residents more actively engaged in town governing?
I can take that one.
That is a question for the ages.
Take a look at the audience.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
So, that's an age-old question, and I can see one, two, three...
I don't think we're going to have a debate about that.
No, no. There isn't much of a debate on this.
No.
Since I got involved seven-plus years ago, we've tried everything, you know, everything. We've tried signs in front of the library. We've tried, you know, ads in the paper. We've pleaded with people here, if they're paying attention, watching at home. People are busy. People are, you know, they're doing their own thing. They elect people, and they expect them to do the right thing by them. That's the only thing I can say, I guess, that makes any sense to me, because other than that, if I try to figure it out, it just gets frustrating, and it's like pulling hairs. So, I don't know what else to say. There really isn't a heck of a lot more that I can really feel that you can do to encourage people to come out, other than begging them, which we've done.
Thank you, Sean. Jim?
Well, the people that don't come out and vote, shame on them. Simple as that. You know, and they'll be the ones that'll criticize us, and I understand that, and I can accept that. But it's always been like this for 26 years. This is thinking outside the box. Joe Green is vice president of several youth sports associations, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe. And I was thinking, how, everyone's busy. I hear everyone's busy. Well, you know something? The deliberative sessions, once a year, and if people schedule the way they schedule, then, you know something? Once a year isn't that hard. What, thinking outside the box is, let's have the deliberative session on a weekend. Let's talk to all the sporting goods. Let's talk to the band. Let's talk to all the people that have an activities, and let's have a freeze of activities for one weekend, and say, "You know something, parents? All the associations have said, 'Look, we're going to freeze all the sports for one day and give you the opportunity.'" Because when my kids were young, I was going to, I didn't want to miss any of their activities. But if we can give them that opportunity, that timeframe, then maybe we'll get more people in attendance. It's a little out of the box, but I don't know what else to say about that.
I mean, you're keying on something that we did, we have talked about in the past, but, you know, nothing ever really materialized. Things still kept going. And maybe that's, maybe that's something that the council can do, is, you know, set aside a weekend. One thing that we're still going to be talking about that's on our agenda is to, and I don't even think it's going to be until the new council is set, but one of the things I made a recommendation to the town manager, hearing from the other councillors, was to switch it to Saturday again. We picked a night for the first one, just because of the lack of the window, because the school was at the same week.
Right.
So I think one of the things that we should consider is definitely putting it back to a Saturday, which makes it a little bit more achievable for some. But to your point, maybe that's what the council can do, is, you know, kind of mandate a weekend, work with the school, I guess, and, you know, how about no sports, no activities for one weekend, you know, so that it doesn't affect the school deliberative session, and it doesn't affect the town deliberative session. Maybe it'll work.
And maybe we can get the newspapers to do more progressive advertising for our meetings. Got it? Good.
Thank you both. Meredith?
In the last five years, the town has had, has held spending to minimum levels with revenues shrinking or staying flat. Can this process continue while maintaining the current level of service?
Is that? I'm up.
Jim, yes.
Jim's up, you're up.
I think that the town council and the budget committee have done a great job in, over the several years, in trying to maintain a flat budget. It is very difficult. We have union contracts that we have to look into, and that we have obligations there, and that has a tendency to grow. Do I think that we're, I know we have some union contracts that we'll be voting on. I've listened to them. I believe we have two councillors, and correct me if I'm wrong, that have experience in negotiating with unions, and the board voted to pass the union contracts. I'm not a union negotiator. I don't have experience in it. I haven't been privy to some of the, and I don't say backed on a bad way, but some meetings that the public don't see during the negotiation process. So I take a look at our budget committee and our town council, and I'm going with your recommendation. And it's difficult, and I think we've done a good job. But sooner or later, taxes, death in taxes, sooner or later, taxes are going to increase. It's just, let's try to keep it down. And at the same time, try to encourage business to come into this town so we can get that revenue stream.
Thank you, Jim. And Sean?
The short end to your question, the short answer to your question would be, no. Taxes will continue to go up. Evidence of that is the budget that we're proposing this year is an increase over the last two. It's very difficult, as Jim had said, it's very difficult to keep the same level of service without having to spend more money. I think one thing that we've done since I've been on the council is all the unions in town, on the town side, have done an excellent job at realizing that we do have a very difficult economy right now. Firefighters were the ones that started, I think, I do that of the police, I think. They started with the first 0%. And then the contracts that we're proposing now, that they accepted, have a 0% in the first year for this upcoming year. So I think that the employees have recognized the difficulty that we're all facing right now as a community, and they did a very good job, you know, being reasonable in their requests and accepting the contracts that they did. I think it's very important that these contracts do pass on Election Day, and it's my hope that they will. But as far as the cost and seeing costs continue to go up, you know, when you go to the gas station, you can't haggle with the guy for the price of gas. When you go to the store to buy food, same thing. Well, the costs that we have to run a town are the same. And in essence, death in taxes, he's right. The taxes are going to go up, and if you want to maintain that same level of service, you're going to have to pay for it. There's no really getting around it. The last two years, and I'll try and wrap it up quick, we put off some things, we took out of some accounts, we didn't fund as highly as we had in the past, and those were some things that we did just to try to keep the taxes at a reasonable level. And we did achieve some good things, and we're provided some relief, but unfortunately, this year, we didn't see that as an option. There were too many things, and we didn't want to lose any more jobs. You know, we realized there might be some shortfalls for, because we cut the library amount that they're giving them, so they might lose some staffing there. But again, when it comes to the town, it's wants and needs, and unfortunately, public safety and running the town are a little bit higher on the priority scale. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Absolutely.
Thank you. I know, and I'm in the private sector, I do have the opportunity to work with both non-union and union companies. I think the unions in the past have done a pretty damn good job negotiating with towns. It's not easy to take away things that you've already given them. I believe there are some issues which we need to bring the unions in line, and they may not like to hear it, but it is what it is. I believe we've done a good job with trying to equate the healthcare portion of that. I think we're pretty close to 80/20, and that pretty much runs with the private sector. Vacation time, time earned. If I don't use my vacation, I lose it. Simple as that. But on the other hand, I also think it's very important that people take their vacations. They need that time mentally to rest and be with their families. So, you know, I think there are things in the budget that we can work at, but if someone thinks that we're going to be able to do it like that, you're only kidding yourself. It's a long and drawn-out process, and I think we've done a pretty good job moving in that direction.
Thanks, Jim. Sean, did you have anything?
Just to steal one thing from the guy sitting over on the wall over there, as he's always told me in the past, it's a slow turn, because you can't just do things overnight, and it does take time.
Hey, thanks. And why don't we go back to the audience? Anybody?
Here we go.
At least he doesn't have a gun.
Thank you, George. Tom Dolan, 19 Isabella Drive. Gentlemen, thanks for stepping up and running. Most of all, the questions you've been answering so far have been, what are your positions on various current topics? I want to go in a slightly different direction and look inside a little bit, and ask you if you can describe yourself, who you are, in terms of what are the three or four values that define you? And as you look across society today, who would you pick out to be, who are your heroes?
Thanks, Tom.
Great question.
You're up.
Sean, you're up. Oh, spotlight.
There you go.
Nice question, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, thanks. I think honesty, integrity, believing for things, and standing up for yourself, I think that's important. I think one of my, I guess one person that I look to is somebody I feel is a good soldier in the world right now would be Ron Paul. I think the guy is, he's right on target with a lot of the things going on in Washington, on the insiders. Unfortunately for him, he's 74 years old, and people look at him as an old man, you know, in the world of politics. And he doesn't have a very, he has a very scary form of policy, I guess some people would say. But I think he means well for the best of the country as far as trying to rein in some of the costs and the debt that the, that Washington folks are trying to pass off on generations and generations of our families. I think that the biggest thing for me as far as role models is somebody that stands up for what they believe in, does the right thing, and admits when they're wrong. I think that, you know, Tim and I were talking earlier, you know, one of the things as a human being, I realize my shortcomings, and, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't, I felt I was a better councillor than I was a chair. So I think that that's, you know, one thing that you realize as you go through life. You try things, you do things in life, and that's pretty much it. I think that's all I have.
Thanks, Sean. Jim?
Well, I've built my reputation in the construction industry over 30 years in my integrity and my respect and fair dealings with people. I think it's very important. Everyone has a say, and they have a right to say what they have to say. I may disagree with them, but then again, you know, you have to move on. I believe I'm well-respected in my industry for that reason. My hero is my father. He was a hard worker. We grew up in Jamaica Plain in a three-family. He worked three jobs. He was a mason and a carpenter by trade, and ended up working his way up to be CEO of one of the largest brick distributors in the, on the East Coast. And he's my hero. Unfortunately, he's not with us now, but he's taught me a lot. And I've been, I've been in Jamaica Plain in the three-family, and I've gone to a very nice neighborhood, so I've seen the spectrum. And my father's always taught, always taught me that you have to have fair dealings, and you have to be honest with people, and I've kept to that.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate that.
John Curran, Six Bay Lane. Thank you both for putting your hats on the rings. Question I have is Pen Gill Road. It seems like we've spent a lot of time, money, and energy in this town talking about it, and we're no closer to having anything up there. There are different opinions, but as a councillor, what would be your assessment as to what you're prepared to commit? Time, resources, capital expenditures for Pen Gill Road versus having the developers do it? And what do you see as a timetable and the town's role in getting that developed at some point? Thanks.
Thanks, John.
Am I up?
Jim, you're up.
I'm up. I want to say, two or three months ago, there was a planning board meeting, or there was some discussion about Pen Gill. I can tell you right now, I'm not in favor of the taxpayers paying for a road through Pen Gill, period. Okay? We have developers up there that are sitting on property, although I am for pro-business, but first of all, I still haven't got a square answer as to whether or not we have the property to put a road through. There was something, and I think it may have been Tom Frieda brought up, do we have easements? Are they recorded at the Registry of Deeds? So there's still a gray area there, but I'm not in favor of the taxpayers paying for that road. And if we do for one, there's going to be another person looking right behind it, saying, "Well, you know something? You paid for a road in Pen Gill. You know, we've got to have a game plan here, and we've got to stick with it." And I'm not going to build, and I will not vote for putting a road through there. I understand the concept, and let those landowners get together, and if they want to develop that, let's find a different way of doing it, but not on the backs of the Londonderry citizens. No.
Thanks, Jim.
I wish I had that one first.
Did you?
Diddo. I've said it in the past when I ran the first time, because this came up back when I ran the first time, and we're still at the same place. The taxpayers shouldn't be funding the road. And to Jim's point, you absolutely set a precedent once you do it once, and you just can't do that. In our normal daily dealings, when we have a, in the past, the town of Londonderry has a residential neighborhood being built by a builder. He comes in, what's the first thing he does? He cleans the land out, he puts a road in. It's the same thing up there, you know? I believe that you're right. I am absolutely for businesses doing that, and if a business comes up there and they want help, then the council absolutely has a fiscal responsibility to do that, or, you know, a duty to do that and pay its diligence. But as far as the taxpayers paying for that road, absolutely not.
Thanks, Sean. Okay, let me go back to one of the email questions if I could. And it's pretty simple. What are your feelings on open space? Sean, I think you're up.
Yep. Open space, I'll, you know, for full disclosure, I've been part of certain things when it comes to that in the past couple of years. I think that back in the day, it did a lot of, it did a lot of great things. It gave us a lot of land that we wouldn't have had, it could have been developed. I think the residents have spoke out for a long while, as well as the boards in town, the CIP, and the council, previous councils. While it's, it's an important function, and it's an important thing to have, I think that the town has reached its goal as far as the original set goal that we, that we're now bonding and paying for for next, over, I think, 20 years, we still have bonds as far as open space. I think that it's important to realize that when we go out and we put bonds out, we're paying for that in perpetuity until those bonds fall off. We've done a lot of good things as far as open space is concerned. The Musquash is a prime example of it. But I think, I think that something that the committee has missed along the way, and I was kind of hoping to see out of the group we just put together, the Open Space Task Force, they still haven't really defined the areas to the public as far as what you can and what you can't do on certain tracts of land. And I think that's important to do as far as managing what you already have, and I don't think we're really doing that yet. I'd like that to be one of their priorities going forward. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Sean. Jim?
I believe in open space. I think it's something that our town does take pride in. I've enjoyed it. I've questioned some of the purchases of our open space, and maybe it's just because I don't understand it. Since I didn't voice my opinion on it, I'm not going to be critical about it. It is what it is, and it's done. I think that we definitely have to make sure that we get the right assessments on open space. I think we can work with a Woodmont developer to get us open space at no charge. I want to see it continue. I think that's a good crew, and I think they're doing a good job. But moving forward in these economic times... But moving forward in these economic times, how much we wanna put into it now will change as economic times improve and if we think we have more funds and more things available to us, well, then, you know, that's one thing. I, I don't see builders knocking down the door to building this town right now. So, I'm really not that concerned about it. I like the plan, I like the direction we're going in, uh, but we can pull back a little bit on that right now.
Thank you, Jim. Hey, why don't we go to the press quickly? April?
Okay. I know you, I know we kind of, um, touched on this before, but, um, with the question of whether or not to hire several additional firefighters now resting with next month's voters, do you think this step, if it passes, will be enough to, in keeping Londonderry's growing community safe?
I think they'll-
Is that you?
That's on you.
I'll take the last one.
Sean, thanks, Sean.
Uh, April, to your question, I think that it is a good start. I think that you have to do things slow. The, the fire department, uh, they were, from everything I've heard from them and from some senior, senior staff that we talked to, including the chief, uh, they are okay with that just to get to the minimum staffing, to be able to fund the overtime, which covers the amount of people that they go on vacation, if there's sick time, injuries, you know, you, you, you do need the extra firefighters to cover that or you will be short-staffed. And one of the, one of the things that we've talked about, and, you know, Jim gets selected, he'll talk about it again in the future. One of the things that you have to realize is that, you know, not so much the cost part of it, but when you, when you fund the overtime, that's gonna, that's gonna cut down on the amount of people that you have to hire, which is, which is less in retirement, it's less in insurance, health insurance and the other benefits that go along with the person that does the job. So, I think that it's important, while people sit there and get mad about the overtime, really the reason we do, we look at it is, you know, the overtime is a function of making sure that we're maintaining our staffing levels and, and making sure that we're, you know, that we have a safe amount of crew for the firefighters and for the people that are living in the town. Uh, and that's, that, that is a big thing and it is important. Uh, one thing that I've realized through the years. So, anyway, your call.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks. I agree with the firefighters. Uh, I think it'll bring us up to a staffing level that I think is reasonable and expected from the taxpayers, but also, on the other hand, uh, in, uh, protecting our employees. I, I just, you know, it doesn't happen often, but when you do have a, a serious issue like a fire and, and, and our employees have to make a decision, uh, to either go in and try to help someone or stand outside because they don't have a third person, really bothers me. And, and, uh, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's needed. And I think that it will be able to handle, and I think the police department will be able to handle the growth for the next, I would say, three to, three to four years. They may say no, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna differ with them.
Thanks, Jim. Sean, did you have anything else to add?
Can I say one more thing about the overtime? I did notice the budget committee and, and I think that we need to work on this. Uh, I, I saw a meeting and they were talking about overtime. And there was some concern about it and I have the feeling that we're not educating the taxpayers enough on exactly what that overtime means and how it's handled. It's kinda like a gray area. People don't like to hear the word overtime, but they don't understand it. And I think we have to work a little bit better and I believe, uh, the, uh, budget committee was gonna look into the overtime situation so they could understand it better. And, and I think we need a better understanding of, of overtime budgets and how they do, how they do operate.
Hey, thanks, Jim.
He's right, but I think-
Thanks, Sean.
I think the council, uh, you know, I think we explained it pretty well in some of the meetings we had, just to try to explain it to the public, um, what the overtime means. You know, it is a cost, it's, it's a, it's a cost that, it's a cost avoidance in a lot of ways and I hate that word, but, again, if it means that we're gonna add staffing, which includes all the things I laid out before, the overtime is a cheaper way to go, so. But explaining it to the public to make them understand that is probably a key.
All right. Thanks, Sean. And we've just about reached the limit of our time, so I appreciate that. And, uh, Jim, you got a minute to close up and then we'll go to Sean's and Sean opens.
Well, being a salesman, you always have to ask for the order, so I'm asking for your vote, all right? We have some tough decisions to make, uh, and the bottom line is, the biggest decisions are how Woodmont's gonna affect and I keep coming back to it, but the bottom line is, that is reality. We can't stop it, but hopefully we can control it. And it will affect us, one way or the other, some, we're gonna see more traffic and some people are gonna be aggravated about it, so. I feel as though, uh, with my background, that I'm definitely suited to assist the planning board and also as, as, as a taxpayer and a citizen to, you know, stand up and say, hey, look at developer, I'm not gonna take this, we don't need to, and it'll be a fine out of negotiation. So, I wish Sean the best of luck, but I, I hope I have better luck than Sean.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Sean?
I think, uh, one of the reasons I ran, like I said, is I felt like I still had some things I wanted to do. Londonderry is at a turning point and like to Jim's point, uh, one way or the other, it's going to change and we need to be on top of it and in front of it. I think that we have a lot of good people in town that'll do that. I think the planning board is on top of it. I've seen some good things out of them lately that leads me to believe that, uh, the people that we have in place there are definitely, uh, staying in front of the developer and not gonna let, not, might be pushed around. I think that when it comes down to it, um, I, I have a lot of experience with budgets, which through my, my professional life, I do a lot, you know, I've had ten-plus years of being a, a manager of people, of, uh, budgets and, uh, statistics and paying attention to detail. Uh, one of the big things that I, I do, I do, do-do, yeah, okay. One of the things I, I have tried to do through my years is listen to people. I know my critics and, and, you know, in the past year, again, going back to the fact that I wasn't the best chair, but in my previous two years as a, as a counselor, I think I did a much better job of being able to listen and focus on people and their opinions and, uh, as a chair, it was much more difficult to do that because you're trying to, you know, keep the factions from, uh, going at it and also trying to listen to people and try to manage a meeting. But, uh, I, I hope that, uh, my luck, uh, comes out on Election Day. Just as, as respect to Jim, on Election Day, I will not be at the polls as, as much. My wife will be having surgery that day, I couldn't ask her not to do it. But, uh, I probably won't be there much of the day, I will try to be there at some point. But, uh, just out of fairness, 'cause, you know, Jim's gonna probably be out there freezing or hopefully warm that day. But, uh,
How are things going?
I wish Jim the best of luck also.